Also for Monday, November 20th to order, roll call.
Mayor Calvin?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Swantus?
Here.
Alvarado?
Here.
Osmas?
Here.
Mesky?
Here.
Plowman?
Here.
Bakerly. Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda that we have in front of us? Seeing and hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent.
So move.
Second?
Once they're made in second of discussion. Ms. Thompson?
On the consent agenda for this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes of November 6th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Minutes of November 13th, Planning Commission Minutes of November 8th, and November 15th, consideration of a resolution designating a new polling location, the acceptance of the Wilmer Community Center Board Minutes of October 11th, building report for the month of October 2017, fire department and police department statistics for the month of October, and the accounts payable report through November 14, 2017.
There's been a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Swantus?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a hearing on the proposed lease agreement with Centra Care Health Systems and Caris Health LLC and related transaction documents. Before we enter into this discussion and open the public hearing, I would just like the public to know that we will be talking about the lease. We will be talking about the reclassification of hospital bonds for qualified 501(c)(3) ratings as well. We have had a couple of public input sessions, public meetings, and so the discussion tonight will be paramount to the lease and affiliation agreement associated with that lease. That's what our discussion will be around. I know that there may be those that wish to bring in other items, but we will try to keep the conversation revolving around the lease and the affiliation agreement, and then the bonds. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Robert Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin, members of the city council. As the mayor mentioned, this is a public hearing on the proposal that the city approve and enter into a long-term operating lease of the Rice Memorial Hospital with Caris Health and Centra Care Health System. Jill Radloff, the attorney for the Rice Hospital Board, is here, as is Tim Keen of Cootac Rock, the city's special counsel for healthcare transactions on this transaction. On the phone as well from Cootac Rock are Bob Cohen and Steve Amon of the Omaha branch of the firm, and they'll have an opportunity to offer their perspective in a moment here. In addition, Jenny Bolton, Bond Counsel for the city, is now in attendance, and she will be addressing the action the council needs to take to reclassify the bonds. So this transaction is before the council on the recommendation from the Rice Hospital Board. They reviewed the transaction documents. They've been working on them previously, but they reviewed each of the documents and approved them, meaning they recommended that the council enter into them on October 30th. Since that time, three weeks ago, the documents were presented at the council's work session on November 6th at an additional public meeting held by the council last Tuesday in this building. And further, the planning commission reviewed the lease on November 8th, as it is required to do under the charter, for any lease longer than three years in duration. The planning commission recommended that the council approve the lease, subject to a condition that the city preserve in the lease its ability to develop a parcel of city-owned property located east of the hospital, budding First Street. That parcel is currently used by the hospital for parking. In the short term, that won't change, but given the planning commission's condition, a new section 2.6 has been included in the lease that addresses this concern and preserves the city's ability to develop that parcel at some point during the term of the lease. That, to my knowledge, I think is the only change to the lease since this came before the council on November 6th. Following the hearing, there will be two recommended resolutions, two separate resolutions the council will be asked to approve. The first one will be approving the transactions that being the lease agreement as well as the affiliation agreement. The second resolution will pertain to the reclassification of the bonds, and the bottom council will speak to that. With that, I think the next steps will be, we'll hear from the attorney for the hospital, an overview of the transaction. We'll hear from the city's special counsel from Cootac Rock, and then I will address what the first resolution will be asked to consider.
Thank you. Ms. Radloff?
Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Jill Radloff. I'm a partner with the law firm of Stinson Leonard Street in Minneapolis. I'm counsel to Rice Memorial Hospital. As you know from prior sessions, there are four key agreements related to this transaction, the first of which is the operating lease between the city and Caris Health, which is a subsidiary of Centra Care Health Systems. That's for a 30-year term with an automatic renewal term for another 30 years. It provides for an option to purchase after 10 years. The second document is called a member control agreement, and that is the governance of Caris Health itself. It covers the board and the management and operations of Caris Health. The third agreement is an affiliation agreement, and it outlines the items that need to be completed prior to closing on this transaction, and defines the relationship between the Rice Hospital Board, the Caris Board, ACMC, and Centra Care. The fourth document is a guarantee agreement where Centra Care is guaranteeing the rent payments that Caris Health will make to the city. I will now give a brief overview of some of the key transaction terms that are covered in the lease and the affiliation agreement and the member control agreement. The first item are items that were very key to the hospital board, and they relate to having service commitments within the community of Wilmer. So there are commitments that certain services will continue to stay in the city of Wilmer during the term, and that there will be opportunities to recruit additional specialists during that term. In addition, there is a capital service commitment for $32 million to be spent at the hospital facility over the first 10 years of the lease. One of the other key items that was key to the hospital board is continuing local control. We have four designees from Rice that will be on the Caris Health Board. It will be a board of 10 members. In addition, we have continued to provide for control by the city of the facility and enforcement rights through the hospital board if there were to be a breach of the lease, and also related to any capital improvements or things that would need to be made have to be approved by the hospital board. The rent of the lease provides that all the payments that are due under the bonds will be paid by Caris Health to the city so that the city has the funds in order to make all of the bond payments. In addition, as I mentioned, those payments are guaranteed by Centra Care. In addition, the lease provides for an intergovernmental transfer. That payment is in the amount of $300,000 per year for the 30-year term of the lease. It also has an escalator provision so that if there is an increase in the property tax levy of the city, that that amount would also increase up to a maximum of 3% per year. As I mentioned initially, the lease includes a purchase option. So after the first 10 years of the lease, Centra Care would have the right to elect to purchase the facility. It can do so only after it has paid off the bonds in full, and it also needs to make a 10-year commitment to the city of Wilmer to continue to have the core services that we've identified continue at the hospital, and also to make another $32 million capital investment over the 10-year period following the time that it would exercise the option. In addition, that purchase option would be subject to any public requirements and compliance with the city's charter at that time, which would likely include a public referendum based on the current charter documents. The affiliation agreement and the lease both provide for a continuation of all hospital staff and employees, subject only to limited background checks and an application process. We have provided that all employees would receive credit for their existing years of service and credit for PTO that they have earned. In addition, Caris Health will honor the union agreements in full. Those will be assumed by Caris Health. As I mentioned, we took care throughout the negotiation process to make sure that the city continued to have oversight of the facility and continued to have control. So I talked previously about enforcement of the lease, and will also comply with any transfer requirements in the event that the purchase option is exercised. If the lease is terminated at any point in time, either due to its expiration or as a result of a breach by Caris Health, all of the assets that have been subject to the lease or otherwise transferred would be returned to the city, and there are specified provisions relating to working capital and other details at that point in time.
Robert, are we going to hear from Tim, or are we going to hear from?
At this point, Mayor, I would recommend that we hear from Cootac Rock, the city's special counsel on this transaction, for any additional thoughts and perspective they have to offer.
Mayor, counsel, my name is Tim Keen, and I'm with Cootac Rock. Been requested and retained to assist the city as special counsel on this transaction, and we also have on audio for specific questions, my partners, Bob Cohen and Steve Amon. I just wanted to hit a couple of the highlights of the transaction that we inherited and where we ended up. And Ms. Radloff gave an excellent summary of the high points of the transaction, some of the areas that we, with guidance from the city council and input from key staff that incorporated priorities, were to negotiate as covenants in the agreement commitments to maintain the core services over the life of the agreement. We negotiated as covenants a commitment to make a minimum $32 million of capital expenditures in the Rice facilities in the first 10 years. And as Ms. Radloff indicated, that is an ongoing commitment in the out years of the agreement. We negotiated covenant and commitment to a continuation of hospital charitable purposes to the public. We negotiated restrictions on the use of the $30 million investment fund for purposes benefiting healthcare and healthcare facilities in the Wilmer area. And we also incorporated the governing issues that Ms. Radloff highlighted in terms of the representation of the new entity and the government board. So with that, we can stand for questions now or later.
And so my understanding is that Cootac Rock's position on this is that it's a favorable agreement?
Yes, we represent entities, public entities, private entities, and the healthcare industry throughout the country on transactions of this nature. And we are here to, and pleased to report, that we have a transaction on terms very favorable to the local community and the long-term ongoing commitments of Centra Care and this new entity to continue to maintain the highest level of service to the Wilmer area.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, I know we're about to get to public comment, but before we do, I want to just walk the council through the first resolution. We ask to adjourn at the conclusion of the public hearing, and then after I have done that, I think bottom counsel Jenny Bolton will have the opportunity to do the same with the resolution addressing the bonds. In your packet, the first resolution and actually all the agreements are attached to that resolution. The first thing it does is, after it goes through some recitals for context, it makes some findings for the council. It's consistent with the discussions that have taken place, and it's essentially setting forth the council's reasons for approving this transaction. The first thing it does is, it references the policy priorities that the hospital board itself enunciated when it approved, and recommended that the council approve these documents. And those are, first, to provide more integrated and effective care to residents of the city and surrounding area, more effectively recruit and retain physicians and other health professionals to serve the people in the area; third, to enhance the competitive position of the rest of facilities; fourth, to strengthen the position of the hospital as an independent provider of healthcare in the service area; and fifth, to provide a source of payments for the obligations of the spending under the outstanding bonds for the hospital and its facilities. So the first finding is that the council would support those policy priorities and make them its own. From there, there are findings that this transaction, that you are withholding, it's the best method of accomplishing those priorities. And finally, some findings related to demonstrating compliance with charter requirements, including the planning commission on the lease that has already taken place, as well as the requirements that would be triggered in the event that Centra Care or Caris would be in a position that at least 10 years from now where it exercises the purchase action for the hospital before any transfer under a purchase action could be finalized, there are the charter requirements that have to be satisfied, including the aforementioned mentioned by Ms. Radloff. The final part of the resolution, it contains four specific actions. The first just simply relates to approving the transaction, approving the lease, and approving the affiliation agreement. Those are the two agreements to which the city will be a party. It also contemplates that there will be some administrative documents related to carrying out the purposes of those two agreements that will need to be executed. It would authorize city staff and the mayor to execute any such agreements. And the final action the council would be asked to take would be to direct me to prepare a resolution, excuse me, to prepare an ordinance to support your consideration and introduction at your next meeting, that would, to make a change to the composition of the Rice Hospital Board to allow representation by Centra Care, who would get to appoint two members who would not have voces of the ex officio members, as well as the two CEOs for Caris who had also become non-voting members of the board. Under the charter, it's certainly within the city's authority to make that change. It just have to do with ordinance. So that's the first resolution. That's the first action you'll be asked to take after the public hearing. There's a second resolution that relates to the bonds, and Ms. Bolton will address that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jenny Bolton from Kennedy and Graven. We are the city's bond counsel. And so the resolution that I've prepared for you relates to the two bond issues that the city has outstanding Series 2013 notes and the Series 2012A bonds. The plan under the proposed lease is that both of those financings would remain outstanding, under the same terms under which they were issued. Nothing would change with respect to those. However, entering into the lease with the 501(c)(3) entity does change the analysis from a tax perspective that relates to the tax exempt status of the bonds. The bonds were issued as governmental purpose bonds with the idea that this was a city-owned and operated hospital, and now this would be operated by a 501(c)(3) entity. The federal tax regulations permit requalifying the bonds as remaining tax exempt, but as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. So the actions in the resolution that I've prepared relate to meeting those requirements. The first step in meeting that requirement would be holding the public hearing tonight, and so your approval needs to be after the public hearing. It also makes certain findings that are required by the tax regulations, and those include that you didn't reasonably expect to enter into this transaction at the time that you issued those tax exempt obligations, and that the life of the obligations is not longer than necessary to finance the bond-financed facilities. And that was true at the time, and there's nothing that's changing in the duration of the bonds, so that finding remains true. And that you've reached the lease amount based on an arm's-length transaction, which results in a fair market value based on the continued governmental purpose of operating a hospital. And so this resolution makes those findings, and then authorizes, well, has you direct staff to work towards finalizing certifications that establish this as a qualified 501(c)(3) bond, and then making a filing with the IRS in connection with this reclassification of the bonds as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds.
Thank you.
And with that, Mayor, I believe you're ready to take public comment.
Thank you. So we'll be taking public comment on the question, when you approach the mic, if you would allow the council to know what area of these four pieces of the agreement that you are speaking to, so that we are aware when the council can follow along. Imagine we've got a grid of 100 pages of things to look at, so if we're trying to find someplace on, it's nice if we know what area to start looking in. And our legal counsel will help us if we have to find the sections as quickly as they can to advise the council what section should be added to these questions. So if legal staff can be prepared to help us with that, then we appreciate it, understanding that this is 100-plus-page documents, so it may be very difficult to do. So with that, I'll open up the public comment. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Johanna Reller. I live at 111 Quincy Avenue. I'm a nurse. I work in the emergency room at the hospital. I don't think any of my comments speak particularly to any of the four pieces, and I apologize that I don't have those numbers in front of me. I didn't know that that was going to be a requirement here today, so I apologize.
That's a requirement.
I'll try and keep my comments general.
Sure.
So I've worked for Rice for six years, and I obviously live here in Wilmer. As you all know, nurses don't oppose this affiliation, but we have repeatedly asked to be a part of the negotiations. Recently, a community, or I apologize, not a community, employee engagement committee was assembled as kind of what appeared to us to be a response to that request, to be involved. However, that committee does not address any of the issues of nurses wanting to be involved. It's more of a communication committee. How do administration communicate with the rest of staff? It's not a, what questions do you have about the negotiations? How can we do this better? How can we protect our patients? Which is how it was proposed to us, I guess. It's really disappointing. That's really what we've asked for all along. That particular committee has had one meeting of introductions, and no real meaningful input into the process. I think that really speaks to me of how administration feels about our input in this. We appreciate the attempts to address our concerns, but you know, I don't feel as though any of the problems have been solved. We really appreciate, I know that some of our concerns have been heard, and we've seen evidence of that in this affiliation agreement, and we really appreciate that. However, the lack of involvement of staff who work with patients is saddening. We do want this consolidation to agree, but we believe that there should be assurances that Caris Health won't start picking away at us after this agreement goes into effect. We're asking you to set up a transition oversight committee to make sure the new corporation keeps its promises and doesn't make unilateral decisions that could harm the quality of care that our patients receive, or undermine our wonderful staff. The agreement is very vague on some of the key issues that we've told you about, and part of that is that, you know, we were told all along that, we don't know. We don't know. We haven't gotten to that yet. We don't know. We don't know. And then the agreement is done. And it's, we see that, and we see that there must have been some knowledge, or we were passed over at the opportune moment when we've been asking all along to be involved. So we would appreciate that transition oversight committee being set up in order to closely watch the Cliffs, that Caris Health is held accountable for its actions, and everyone can be assured that our hospital will continue to provide outstanding patient care for years to come. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Betty Ruston, and my address is 401 Harriet Street Spicer. And I guess the part of the lease that I'm here for is staff retention and recruitment. I have been a RN at Rice Hospital in the Dialysis Unit for 32 years, and I'm here to ask you to make sure the consolidation with Centra Care benefits patients and our community. You've heard from us many times, and asking you to seek improvements to the agreement. Nurses have asked for guarantees in writing on keeping services in Wilmer, our contract, insurance, and our retirement. As you know, staff will no longer qualify for the public pensions. They will be frozen and will receive Centra Care's retirement plan, which management says matches our pension. We are losing a really important benefit and have concerns about still being able to retire with dignity. We ask you to require Rice, Centra Care, and Caris to sign a letter of understanding guaranteeing that staff will receive comparable retirement benefits. I'd also really ask you to create a transition oversight committee that monitors and makes sure that Caris keeps its commitments to patients and staff. We value- We value wonderful patient care, and I'm just hoping that we can continue that with the great nurses that we have and to recruit more employees. And I think this would really help in that matter. Nurses support this consolidation, but we want to make sure it's done right. This is your last chance to have input and speak about this agreement that is such a major change for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Nicole Margas. I live in Wilmer, Minnesota.
Address, please.
509-36th Street Northwest.
Thank you.
I'm a nurse on, at Rice on Women's and Children's, and I have been there for 12 years and been a resident of Wilmer the whole time. And I'm speaking about the recruitment and maintaining our current staff, as was talked about. You've heard last week our concerns with changes for contract employees regarding our insurance. I just want to reiterate that that I personally know of two nurses who have resigned from our unit. I can tell you if it doesn't change. If this, I would, I would expect possibly a third of our staff to leave, of contracted staff to be done on December 31st. It's going to be very difficult to provide the quality of care that we currently provide if that happens. Something has to be done regarding that. And I don't know. Sorry. But anyway. And it's just going to be very difficult for Rice to be able to recruit nurses as well, coming into coming into possibly having to pay those high premiums as a contract staff. Nurses already drive from over 30 miles. Some took work here, which is awesome. They want to come work here because of our great benefits, our great pay, and to work at this great hospital. They will leave. They will go elsewhere. And nurses that live in Wilmer are willing to drive 45 minutes to an hour to work elsewhere. Because they can't afford to pay an extra $900 a month for their health insurance. So I agree. I would like to see an oversight committee with some of the contract employees. Just, I mean, we are in favor, but we want it to go smoothly. But we also want to be able to maintain and recruit good quality RNs. And the RNs that we have here, we don't want, I don't want to see a third of my coworkers leave.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else that wishes to speak?
Carney Alex, 2056th Street, Daniel, Minnesota. Good evening, Mayor Kelvin and Wilmer City Council. I am the Pharmacy Director at Rice Memorial Hospital. Having worked at Rice for 16 years with the last 11, as the Pharmacy Director, I've seen a lot of changes. Changes in technology, changes in reimbursement, changes in the requirements that the hospital faces on a regulatory aspect. We continue to provide excellent care and maintain a high caliber workforce. However, if Rice stays independent, how long can we stay financially viable? Reimbursement shrinks as we are asked to do more and more. I believe that integration with a provider clinic and a larger health system is the best way to ensure that Rice can continue to provide high-quality, patient-centered care. The ideal opportunity is before you with Caris Health. In my role, I have worked closely since 2011 with CentraCare staff to maintain and upgrade Epic, which is the hospital's electronic medical record. The CentraCare staff are open to listening to our ideas and working with us to improve the workflows and processes in Epic. Many times they found our ideas so helpful that they have in turn implemented those processes at CentraCare sites. I believe this kind of collaboration will continue and even flourish once the integration takes place. Rice's patients will not receive lower quality of care as a result of the integration, as some are saying. I believe the opposite will be quite true. Patient care will be greatly improved by the providers and staff of Rice, ACMC, and CentraCare working together more closely than ever. If you look at the Rice website, it lists our mission, vision, and values. Included on that page is this. Together with other healthcare facilities in our area, we are working to assure the continuing availability of medical services, providing specialized medical care as a supplement to existing services and facilities, sharing technological resources to save costs, and forming partnerships which will result in operational management and administrative efficiencies. To ensure Rice can fulfill its mission, we must be willing to make decisions now that will allow that mission to be fulfilled for many years to come. Please vote yes to approve the integration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak to the lease agreement? CNN hearing done. I will close the public hearing and bring the matter to the city council for their consideration as their motion.
I will enter that motion.
Second.
I made the second discussion. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. If this deal would go south in a few years, do the bonds have to be reclassified?
So I'm assuming you're saying that it would go south, and then we would put our
We would get back, you know, what the agreement says. Yeah, but then we'd be and if the bonds aren't paid off, then we'd be responsible for them, I'm assuming. And then they'd have to be reclassified?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, nothing changes with the obligation, with respect to the obligation to pay those bonds. They are still the city's obligation. It is just that now, rather than paying them from operating revenues of the hospital, you're paying them from lease revenues of the hospital. So those payments will still come from the hospital to the city to make payments on the bonds. On the 2012 bonds, those were issued as general obligation bonds. That general obligation remains in place, so the city is still obligated. If the lease were to terminate, if this didn't work out, nothing would change. You would take back over the operation of the hospital. There would be a transition period for that. There is built into the lease in terms of a decision to terminate it. Now, I think others could speak to, you know, the options to terminate if things weren't going right. But at any rate, you would then take over the operations of the hospital once more, and again, you would then pay those bonds from operating revenues rather than lease revenues, but your obligation would remain. In terms of the tax-exempt qualification, there wouldn't be a need at that time to re-qualify the bonds. This is sort of a more restrictive standard that you're meeting. And so once you've met that more restrictive standard, nothing's really going to change in terms of the economics of the bonds or, you know, needing to take action to move to the less restrictive standard, unless you wanted to, and then that could be done as well, but it might be complicated.
So either way, the bonds will be paid off. If it went south, it falls back under the taxpayers of municipal hospital, correct?
Right. They are revenue obligations, but that the city stands behind the 2012 bonds with its general obligation. So that would be, you know, if the revenues weren't sufficient, then you would have a tax obligation behind that.
I don't suspect this is going to go south, but I had to ask that question as far as the bonding. Thank you.
Jill, could you talk about the guarantee of the bond? Please.
There's a guarantee agreement that's an unconditional guarantee from CentraCare Health Systems to guarantee the payments that Caris Health would make to the city. So that would be an enforceable remedy that the Rice Hospital Board and the city council would have to pursue payments from CentraCare if there were a default by Caris Health.
So the way I understand it is that the guarantee is there from CentraCare is backing Caris Health on the bond. But in the example that Councilmember Christiansen shared would be as if the council took the operations back, then at that point it would be back on the hook. So it would not be because of a default from CentraCare. I'm sorry, of Caris Health. If Caris Health defaulted, the bond would still be callable. But not the responsibility of the citizens of Wilmer. It's kind of complicated. That's why I wanted to make sure that we understood that. There's two different pieces there that are happening. So additional comments? Councilmember Mesky?
I made similar comments at the public forum. I'll make again. Rice is successful because of our employees. Medicine, patient care, it is driven by people. And as we approached this, you know, we had those three key pieces we were looking at. The relationship with the city and local control, and I think that this affiliation does an excellent job of that. We also talked about patient care and the capital service commitments and service commitments that are in this are great. I know there are some that aren't listed by name. However, I still believe especially an entity that would like to purchase a hospital in 10 years, we don't want to lose services, and I think we might actually gain services, and I think that is great. And we also had employee engagement, and I think for the most part, as you've heard from employees, there's a high degree of satisfaction. However, as we sit, other circumstances have coalesced at the same time. And as you sit in this seat, we have to make sure that this affiliation is successful. What we cannot have is a mass exodus of staff as soon as we put this in place. That would be very unpalatable. And so I'm convinced as far as the affiliation is concerned, that we've addressed the pieces we're supposed to address. I know what our responsibility is on this side, and I am not going to micromanage the hospital, nor are we should hold hostage this agreement to make those things happen. However, I am intrigued by some of the comments of a trans, you know, this transitional oversight committee. However, again, not to oversteps one's bounds. We do have a board in place. I could see an advocacy role very clearly in something like that, because I'll continue to advocate for our employees. I need them to be here. We need them to stay. People that say, well, they leave, they can be easily replaced. I caution you down that road. That's not necessarily the case. You're talking about, in many cases, highly skilled employees that are very difficult to be brought out here and to recruit. So any kind of an advocacy role we can play, I think is good. I don't know what a transitional oversight committee could look like, but it is an intriguing idea to me. But as far as the affiliation agreement is concerned and the pieces that we looked at initially, I think we have, in my opinion, met the litmus test. However, I think we do need to continue to advocate, especially as we start hearing stories. We can't have a third. And whoever said that, that can't happen. It just cannot happen. Because this would be an exodus out of here, and assured that this affiliation would fail, and we can't have it fail. It has to be successful.
Mr. Scott or Ms. Radloff, could you talk about the oversight that is written into the document?
Mr. Scott? Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Under this agreement, the Rice Hospital Board will continue to exist. It will have responsibility to oversee the operations and management of the hospital. It will have specific responsibility to see that the service commitments and capital expenditures that have been addressed actually at least are satisfied. If one has been going to break a lawsuit, if that's not the case, you don't force those commitments. In addition to the right given license, the city terminated the agreement under those circumstances. The hospital board will also be able to approve any material improvements for the Rice Hospital and its facilities. During, so nothing could happen without the Rice Board approving it as far as improvements go. So definitely significant responsibility will remain if the city's authority to be exercised through the Rice Hospital Board to make sure that the commitments made in these documents are going to be under by Caris.
Anything to add to that?
The only thing I would add is in terms of the representation on the Caris Health Board, we have significant representation of the Rice appointees to that, which will be the operating governing board of the combined ACMC and Rice Hospital. And so obviously, that will be Rice representatives very involved in that governance as well.
And then could you speak to the in my understanding is, is that on the CentraCare Board, that when they've had affiliations that they've done with other facilities, they've never allowed additional members to that board? Could you address how that is being handled so that we have local control in west central Minnesota specifically to the operations board of CentraCare?
That is correct, Mayor. This, as a part of this transaction within the affiliation agreement, there's provision that provides for two representatives to be appointed from Caris Health to the CentraCare Board itself. So those would be representatives that to date, CentraCare has done a lot of these affiliations. They have not put any community representatives on the CentraCare Board themselves as a result of that affiliation. So this is a very significant transaction and an opportunity that we have to be involved in CentraCare's growth platform going forward.
And so really, that puts the city of Wilmer and ACMC under Caris Health. When I talk ACMC, I'm talking about more than just the city of Wilmer. But when we talk about those pieces, it really puts us in a position of driving our future to a more clearer vision than what other affiliates have had up to this point with CentraCare.
That is correct. And one other item I would mention is the fact that we've got co-CEOs here. So we have the CEO from Rice that will continue with Caris Health, and the CEO lead at ACMC will continue. And they'll be heavily involved in operating this platform going forward that we think will extend beyond Wilmer.
Thank you. Councilmember Plom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Specifically during the transitionary period, but ongoing from there, speaking directly towards the piece regarding the various boards and specifically the local governing board. What will be the frequency of communication between the Rice Board and the council initially and going forward? How much access do we have to the information that derives from those meetings?
So we would anticipate a lot of that would continue the way it is right now, where the Rice Board meets, they present the minutes to the city council, and you approve those or comment on those minutes. We do think the frequency will decrease over time. There won't be a need for monthly hospital board meetings as there are right now. But as you point out, I think initially there will be more need. So we are in the process of amending the bylaws for the Rice Hospital Board. And it will change that it doesn't require monthly meetings, but that doesn't mean that at least initially they won't meet monthly for the initial period of the affiliation.
Okay, can I follow up for a second? So hypothetically speaking, as the board meets after, you know, hypothetical transition, so to speak, if certain issues arise or if they decide to create a subcommittee or coalition or whatever of employees, staff members, whatever, that could be something that could be done and brought to the city separately, or is that something that would have to be brought to CentraCare?
If it was, it would likely work through Caris Health, but the Rice Board will continue to have committees as well. So there could be, in the bylaws, there are provisions to continue to have a finance committee and an executive committee, and in the future, if there's a need for a certain project or employee engagement or something like that, they could create a committee. The Rice Board could create a committee to do that as well.
So they will be autonomous in that aspect?
Correct. And they could, those committee members do not always have to be Rice Board members. They could be outside representatives as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Obrado?
I was going to ask you another question about the CentraCare Board with the two members from the Wilmer area. They will be voting members?
They will be voting members.
And how many members again are on that separate table?
15.
15? Yeah.
15 and two additional, make it 17.
There'll be 17 board members.
There'll be 17 going forward.
Okay.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you. Now, I was asked a question the other day, and I forgot about it.
Now, I was asked a question the other day, and I forgot about it until just now. Somebody asked me, is the ambulance service affected by this affiliation?
Yes, it is.
So they'll completely be under Caris, not CentraCare, Caris Health. Okay, that was it.
I've been asked to pass the gavel, if I'm going to make some comments, so I'm passing the gavel to Councilmember Nelson. At this point, I would like to just let the public know that through this process, I think that the council has worked very diligently to make sure that the needs of our community have been addressed, and that those needs of the community are similar to what Councilmember Mesky has stated, and that is that patient care is number one. If this agreement did not keep patient care equal or improve patient care, I would not support this. That we would look at our citizens, and that our citizens would make sure that we as a council are making good decisions to support the outcomes that our citizens need, to have local healthcare provided locally and regionally where possible, to keep those services as close to home as we can. And I believe this agreement does that. The other thing that I heard loud and clear in the public is that the financial piece. And that's why I had some follow-up questions on the bond, because the number of things that I heard from our citizens within our community were, we want to make sure that, number one, the hospital's successful, Caris Health is successful, but then at the same point, we don't want to be on the hook for those bond payments if something were to go bad with Caris Health. And the example that was shared with us, that still potentially could happen, but we're all looking at a favorable agreement here. So with all that being said, I really speak strongly to this. I also, and am in agreement, well, that was easy for me to say, with Councilmembers Mesky and Plowman, in that if the hospital could consider this transition committee, that would certainly be helpful. But that will be totally up to the hospital to make those decisions. So again, I don't want to lose a third of our nurses, but one of the things the union told us is, don't change our contract, keep our contract the same, and then we will stay with you. So I hope that the union sticks with what they told us that they were going to do, and stick with us, and stick with us through this process. Change is never easy, change is fun, but sometimes when you get to the other end of change, you go, man, I wish we would have went here a lot faster. So with that, with your permission, Councilmember Nelson will retain the gavel.
I have a last, yeah.
Are we ready to, are we ready to vote on this issue?
Mr. Mayor, maybe we could have somebody repeat the resolution that's before us.
Correct, I was just going to go there, so thank you. Mr. Scott, if you could share that with us.
Appreciate it. Mayor, members of the council, so this motion is to approve a resolution, you have it in your packet. It goes through, it makes findings of fact establishing the council's determination that this transaction is in the city's interest. As we described, it then formally approves the operating lease agreement. It formally approves the affiliation agreement. It authorizes the city to enter into and execute any additional documents necessary to complete the lease and affiliation agreements. And finally, it will direct me to bring an ordinance back for introduction at the next council meeting to make the changes to the Rice Board to allow non-voting participation by Caris and CentraCare.
So it's agreed to?
That was great.
So we're ready for roll call vote, roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
And that resolution does pass. Next is a resolution approving the reclassification of the hospital bonds, Mr. Scott.
Mayor, this is the resolution that Jenny Bolton addressed the council about. I don't know if Jenny, you have any additional comments at this point, but this is the resolution necessary for the council to reclassify the bonds to be qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. I'll move that resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the reclassification of the hospital bonds as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
And that resolution passes as well. On behalf of the mayor's office, I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, and I know the council would echo what I'm saying. It's good to hear from you, and we do appreciate that. You certainly can stay for the rest of our meeting, it'll be as riveting as this has been. But I understand if you want to leave, you certainly can do so. So thank you very much.
The leader has disconnected, the conference will be terminated in five minutes.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
That was huge, you guys.
Mesky, did you want, I'll have to wait till the end of the year. General Obligation Street Improvement Finance Series 2017A, Mr. Okins.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight we have with us Doug Green from Springsteads Incorporated, and they, he will do the presentation of the PowerPoint and explain what action we're looking for tonight.
Mr. Green?
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, Doug Green, Springstead Incorporated, it's a pleasure to be here. I'll make this as brief as possible, you all already had a pretty extensive evening, but please feel free to ask questions along the way. So requesting of the council two actions to enact, the first action is just approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds and levying the taxes. Looking at these numbers might be familiar to you, looking at the projects over the last spring and summer, the 2017 Street Improvement Program, about $2.4 million, 1.1 million of it will be funded through the issuance of general obligation bonds, other cash contributions from the city, state aid contributions from the county, and from the utility. Oh, I went to the wrong one, there we, one second, sorry. Looking at the sources of repayment, over half of the repayment of the bonds will come from special assessments up to about $694,000. It'll actually be a little less than that. The other portion will come from a tax levy. Tax levy, we do certify the property tax levy to the repayment of the bonds, however, come levy time, around now, you can modify those with the county and really repay the bonds from any sources of the city, and it indeed has been the city's practice to offset all our portion of the tax levy with the Community Investment Fund and/or the Public Works Reserve. So when we look at the estimated levy impact, you should know it can be, would likely be less than that. So again, the first action was approval of the ordinance. The second action is approval resolution authorizing the sale of the bonds, not approving the bonds, you're just authorizing us to move forward with the sale, given certain parameters, and again, providing for their payment. So looking at a little specifics of the bonds, again, just like last year, we're going to sell to a local bank syndicate. It keeps the money in the community as opposed to selling them publicly, and then, you know, the bonds can end up in Texas or somewhere, or somewhere else in the country, so it's always nice. This will be contingent upon satisfaction of the ordinance process. And what the second resolution in front of you does is authorizes what we call a pricing committee, for lack of a better term, and that's a, consists of the mayor or his designee, city administrator, and the finance director based on, based off of certain parameters. And those parameters are that the bonds do not exceed 1.1 million, the rate will not exceed 3.25. There's a lot of cushions in there, it will be less than that. That just gives us cushion between now and the time we do negotiate and sell the bonds. There's a big run-up in interest rates, certainly, you know, given today's market, we expect it to be significantly lower than that. Final maturity in 2028, that's ten repayment periods. The parameters resolution will set the first early call date or early redemption date and approve the final tax levy. So looking at the, based off of current market conditions, and these interest rates at the time these were put together, again, looking at a 10-year repayment level payments of principal and interest, looking at around $120,000, $130,000 a year in principal and interest payments. Assessments will offset that by about $80,000, leaving annual levy requirement of around $50,000. But again, that likely be reduced with other city resources. And the interest on the assessments is charged at 4%. So with that, much easier than your last topic, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, we're not done yet. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Seen an hearing done, we'll bring it to the council table, council?
I'll enter that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Does this take two resolutions?
Two.
So the first one is?
First one is to adopt a resolution finalizing the sale of General Obligation Improvement Bonds Series 2017A and appointing the pricing committee of the mayor, city administrator, and finance director.
Mr. Mayor, and I do believe we need to pass the ordinance that was in front of the council on the last, that was published on the 10th and approved at the last meeting.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, you introduced the ordinance and signed a public, or made the public hearing for tonight, so you have to adopt that ordinance. Then the second action would be to pass the resolution authorizing the sale.
Okay, that's not either on my paper or on the tablet, it's not on either one, so. So what are we supposed to be doing here? I'm, now I'm confused.
Authorize the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I agree, the resolution in front of you is confusing because it only references the ordinance that the council talked about last week, had published in the paper from the previous meeting. But we do need to approve the ordinance.
I move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the ordinance. Okay, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
And that resolution does pass. So the next thing we have to do is?
Mr. Mayor, introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale and assigning the pricing committee with those criteria mentioned in his presentation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to do what's been mentioned.
And I believe that's a resolution.
That's correct. A parameters resolution, correct.
Okay. Anything, any discussion?
Just repeat what we're doing. What's the resolution?
Yeah, it's authorizing the sale of the bonds, again, not approving them, that will be done by the pricing committee. You're authorizing the sale of the bonds, which authorizes us to move forward and establishes that pricing committee which will approve the bonds based off of certain parameters.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just include here, for those council members who are new to the council, this is a process that the city has used for the last two years. The city has taken into consideration the cost of ratings and those types of things, and incorporate that into the pricing and communications with the local banks. We've been able to place those with the local syndicates. I think there's been five bank participations in the last two years.
Okay, so there's been a motion on the table and seconded to adopt the finalized sale of the General Obligation Improvement Bonds Series 2017A and appointing a pricing committee of the mayor, city administrator, and finance director. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
And that resolution passes as well. Thank you, sorry about that little bit of confusion, but we didn't have anything in our packet to support.
No, no, I agree, it is, this ordinance process is confusing, I agree.
Appreciate that. Next is the QuickTrip Utility Easement Vacation. Mr. Peterson, our Public Works, I'm sorry, Community Development Director.
Hmm. For some reason, this isn't loading either, so, there we go.
There we go.
No. Yep, this is correct. At the previous meeting, the council considered a recommendation from the planning commission to consider the vacation of an easement that is currently encumbering property being purchased by QuickTrip of La Crosse, Wisconsin. It's a portion of a utility easement that's described as a westerly five feet of Lot 2, Block 1, First Minnesota Edition, and that's a property directly south of Wells Fargo. The utility companies were notified of the vacation proposal. There are no utilities in this easement as it exists today, so there are really no issues with the vacation. The planning commission has recommended that the easement be vacated as petitioned, and its recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution that vacates the utility easement as petitioned by QuickTrip.
Anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seen an hearing done, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the city council, council?
Move staff's recommendations, Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the QuickTrip Utility Easement Vacation. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
That resolution passes as well, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Next is the city council open forum, Nicole Mags, I believe she spoke earlier, don't see her here. And then Kim Davis, I don't see her here as well. Seen a hearing done, nobody else for the city council open forum. Next is a set a hearing for consideration of an ordinance to amend the rates charged by Wilmer Municipal Utilities. Mr. Scott? I'm sorry, Mr. Heron.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. The utility commission, following our joint meeting that we had here two weeks, three weeks ago, has moved forward with adopting a resolution requesting the council to give consideration to amending our rates and charges at the Wilmer Utilities, and we're asking that you set that public hearing at your upcoming council meeting.
So the motion would be to introduce an ordinance and set a public hearing for 7:02 PM on December 4th.
I'll enter that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjust the, amend the rates charged by Wilmer Municipal Utilities, discussion. Again, this is setting the public hearing.
Yes, just a hearing.
It's just a hearing, right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, hold on, motion with a roll call, is what I have written, is that correct? I thought it was just a.
Simple motion.
Simple motion is all that's needed.
It's a hearing.
I think, Mayor, just to introduce the ordinance and set the public hearing, I think that can be done by motion.
That's what I thought too, but then I looked at my notes and it said I had to do roll call, so. Okay, simple motion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion does carry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Consideration of electronic signature policy, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You have in your packets a short draft policy that would allow the city and establish criteria for when the city will accept and allow the use of electronic signatures. This is pursuant to a state statute that has been passed generally promoting the use of electronic documents and electronic signatures on documents, and generally establishing that electronic documents and signatures are equivalent to paper documents and signatures. that electronic documents and signatures are equivalent to paper documents and signatures. That statute, however, does allow cities to determine for themselves when and under what circumstances they will accept electronic signatures. The policy before you pursuant to that statute would allow the city to accept electronic signatures on minutes, resolutions, ordinances, as well as contracts and agreements, provided that certain criteria can be satisfied, which are that the signature is capable of verification, that the signature is under the sole control of the person using it, and that the signature is linked to the data in such a manner that it is readily ascertainable if the data changed after the signature is applied. These criteria, I think, are fairly standard in policies that allow electronic signatures. That's the, the key components of making sure that it's as reliable as a wet signature, as they're called. The policy would further allow the city administrator to identify technologies that are out there that satisfy these criteria. Technology changes, there could be new software introduced, rather than having to come back to the council, specify this in the policy itself, this policy will grant the city administrator the authority to make that determination. So with that, the recommendation would be that the city council pass a motion approving this policy.
Enter that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve electronic signature policy. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we done this before? Is this the very first time we've done this?
To my knowledge, this is the first time the, the city has adopted a formal policy on this.
Wasn't it on a work session?
We.
Work session, two weeks ago, it was on work session.
Okay, I thought we, a couple of years ago, we talked about this. Okay. That's it.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Do we, do we have a set of documents that we're thinking about using electronic signatures for? Or do we have anything like that on play? What are we thinking about? How are we going to use this?
I don't have anything in particular right now that I'm waiting for, but I will tell you that last couple of years, I mean, it's a common practice now in, in government contracts and expediency and real estate transactions and so forth. I think we're just catching up with everyone else, and we'll have that always as an option.
No, I'm, I'm for it. I'm not, I'm not saying that. I, I just hope that it's easy to use. We use it at work, and it's, it's a process.
Councilmember Plowman, followed by Mesky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Administrator somewhere over there. There you are. Just before this, so we're setting the public hearing tonight, it would be kind of nice to, to hear of some potential usages, I guess, in our, in our.
Not a public hearing. No. You have to approve it.
Oh, the motion is here.
Right.
Oh, well, then I guess, never mind. I'll withdraw my statement.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, but I didn't. I'm sorry.
If they're not coming back.
It's not coming back. Councilmember Mesky, followed by Nelson.
Explain to me what, how this actually works, and what's the security piece that makes sure that it's not.
Hacked, if you will, for lack of a better term.
I probably am the last person in the room you want to give the technical answer. I can tell you my experience in using it on court documents and things. You have a policy that you basically verify as yours within Adobe, is a program we use. When you go to sign a pleading or something, you just plug in your signature. I think, you know, the analysis of how secure that is and how, you know, ascertainable it is, that that was the intent of the person who says they signed it, to sign it, that's all done by court administration, and I think that it's essentially built into the program.
Then a follow-up, it's an IT thing. Do we keep our, all of the, the system that would use this, is it all going to stay within city email? Do we have a policy about such things? If you're going to do electronic signature, is that going to be all done within our own system? Because I know that's how they do it in the court system too. They, all of those documents internally are signed within their own system through Adobe, and then they could be disseminated outside of the system, but the signature is always within, and I think that's their security. So I guess my question is, can the policy, or is there somewhere else the policy addresses if the signature, that they have to be done within our system, to be created and then shipped out? Because otherwise, anybody could create an Adobe document outside of our system and shoot it into the system, and we'd have an electronic signature that perhaps is not ours. And maybe I'm just talking IT.
I thought it was addressed, I thought it was addressed in the document, but.
Yeah, I think that that would sort of be built into these criteria. So in other words, a policy shall be approved if the following are true, that it's capable of verification, that it's under the sole control of the person using it. I mean, I think the council's now saying, assuming you can meet these basic security tests, we'll accept signatures, and then it's up to staff to make sure they've got practices to make sure that.
Okay, so that would be included in the practice part?
I think it's kind of built into it, yeah.
All right, if you're sure.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mesky, just to comment on that point. We did some looking into this at our company, and I guess, from what Adobe has told us, it is cross-platform, both in-house and out-house. So the, if you have the software that's capable of doing this, the data encryption used on software in, in Florida will also encrypt and decrypt on the other end here in Minnesota. So for all intents and purposes, it can pretty much go anywhere if it is a legitimate encrypted signature.
Thank you, Mr. Plowman, and I appreciate the use of out-house in your description.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm going to ask Councilmember Plowman's question a little differently. Why are we doing this now? Do we have any thought on how we might use this currently?
Mr. Holland.
I'll defer that to Mr. Oakins.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess I wasn't involved in, in requesting this policy. I mean, I, I believe the council's the one who initiated the discussion and requested it.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
So we're, we're trying to figure out why we're doing something that nobody really wanted us to, but now we're going to try to figure out how we're going to do it.
Mayor, if you would.
Councilmember, I mean, City Clerk Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this topic came up under Mike McGuire, our interim city administrator, and I know his office had received requests on some agreements. Different individuals with the agreements had inquired, do we accept electronic signatures? So it was a process that was started under Mr. McGuire.
Councilmember, Councilmember Mesky.
No, it's Councilmember Plowman.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a bunch of, and I, that's why I was going to start talking earlier, is I thought that we were going to come back, and that would be opportunity to talk to our technical team, because I think they know a lot more about it than, than what we do here on the table and, and in the room, but some potential applications.
I hope so.
Yeah. Some potential applications could be, there's a lot of city websites, for example, that, for permitting, for, for certain applications to do this and do that, and file for this and file for that. They do actually embed and use electronic signature. So you can actually file an electronic document for your building permit, and you can legally sign it on that website. So you don't actually have to tangibly take pieces of paper, and you can make, put attachments to that and whatnot. There's a whole bunch of other things that can be incorporated into websites and other such things.
Councilmember Nelson.
I use electronic signatures for insurance applications that I do, but you've raised kind of an interesting question, if maybe we need to table this and have our IT department come back and explain how this is going to be used, or whether they're prepared to use it, since we don't really have an example of how we would do that. So I'm not sure that it's worth with that, so.
If you'd like to table, you can certainly make a motion to table.
Well, I guess I'm curious if anyone else has, I mean, we've heard some concerns expressed, I'm just curious how we're going to use it, and if we're prepared to use it.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember Mr. McGuire speaking about this, just when I thought we had it somewhere prior to, it was last year, evidently, and, and we are behind the times here with electronics and, and digital signatures that we can accept. I remember him talking about us accepting the, the digital signatures, electronic signatures, because everybody else does. If you go to the Department of Transportation over here, they do the state capitol, and I think the county does, if I'm not mistaken, but it'll get us up to speed on, as Mr. Plowman, Councilor Plowman mentioned, building permits and permits for to build, put up a fence or, that, those are simple suggestions, but we're, we're behind the times. I think we, we need to catch up here and, and go ahead with the motion tonight. Motion was made, right?
Yes. Made and seconded.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm fine with the policies, simply putting the policy in place, but I think we perhaps need some implementation practices or something with how it's going to be used, and to make sure that our IT is up to implementing it.
Mr. Holland, I think you have that direction correct.
Could you repeat that? I, it was kind, it's the audio, I can't hear that well over here.
What we're seeing is we want to make sure that we have a system in place to where we can do this, and there isn't great confidence in the answers that we've heard tonight, that we have a process in place internally to take care of that. So can you just get back to us so we know for sure we can do what we're talking about doing, and we know what we're going to do?
Yes, sir, no problem.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Close the polls, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, a consideration of purchase of playground equipment from Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground. Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, before you, is information regarding playground equipment that we have purchased or, in the process of purchasing through Minnesota, Wisconsin Playgrounds. Earlier this, this year, the council re-appropriated dollars from the Swanson Park concession stand project that was not completed and set aside $90,800 for playground equipment. Staff have identified the equipment that we would like to purchase. We've identified one unit going to Miller Park. The other unit will be with input from the council as to what park that equipment would be installed at, so we're requesting the council to approve the purchase of this equipment. Besides the resources available from the, the re-appropriated dollars for playground equipment, there will be a little more money needed, and that money will come from the Miller Park tennis court project.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'd move to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the purchase of playground equipment from Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground. Can you help me a little bit with the financing side of this? I know that the council at the retreat put dollars, and put dollars towards doing some playground improvements, and then when we approved the Miller Park project, we'd put $40,000 in there for that. So are we just talking two pieces of equipment here, or what are we actually talking about? Looks to me like two pieces of equipment.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, what we're planning to purchase is two units, so two, actually, it's, it's more than that, two five-to-12 units, a two-to-five unit, and two extra pieces, one being a swing set, one being a, I'd call it a balance structure. The game plan is to put the, one of the five-to-12 units, the two-to-five unit, and the extra swing set and the balance structure at Miller Park. The other unit will be put in, well, it's all going to be in storage over the winter with a spring installation, and the other unit will go in a park to be determined with input from the community and council.
Thank you. Council? Councilmember Nelson.
Very supportive of purchasing the playground equipment, but can you just walk us through, I thought we had money in the budget for 2017, both for playground equipment, and then we allocated some additional, I, I actually was expecting there to be more equipment, and then I also was concerned, I know we were under a deadline to get this done, and I feel like we're past that deadline, so I'm just curious, have we already ordered this? Or what are we, I'm just concerned with where we're at.
Yeah, we are. Mayor Calvin, members of the council, council member Nelson, the equipment has indeed been ordered. It was a November 15th deadline to approve this. The resources for this were, we did not have money in the 2017 budget, we had submitted that, and it was not funded for 2017. The council, in reallocating dollars from the Miller, or from the Swanson Field Project, set aside, our records, in speaking to the finance director, $90,800 for playground equipment. They reallocated $140,000, because the next item is Miller Park. I've got that right here. They reallocated $150,000 of the Swanson Field Project to Miller Park, and then some of the remaining dollars went to Stormwater, I believe, and the rest of the alternates that were funded for Rice Park. So that's what I remember, the reallocation of dollars happening with the Swanson Field Project. And the resolution that stated that at whatever council meeting earlier this year.
What is being proposed in next year's budget for playground equipment?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, council member Nelson, there is $100,000 in next year's budget proposed, and I believe that's in the mayor's proposal as well, that you guys will wrestle with in the next couple of weeks.
Just no discussion? Councilman Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Supportive of this move, hoping to get our playgrounds back to, back to full inventory, so to speak. I think it'd be kind of cool if, for the, obviously, the, the Miller Park stuff is allocated, so for the rest of it, might be kind of cool, and might be a good PR thing for the city of, you know, through the city's website, or the city's Facebook page, or something like that. If there could be some sort of program for taking votes or something like that on where the playground equipment should go, get people interested in, you know, find out, you know, where do we got this, you know, where do we got the biggest batches of kids that are missing their playground equipment? Obviously, it's all got to get replaced, but, you know, having people take part in something like that and get excited for it would also show us kind of the demographics of the area too, so. It's a possibility, I don't know if that idea piques anybody else's interest, but.
Different way to gather input, which is what we heard earlier today, that we need to look at different ways to gather input.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't, just want to, as a council, say it needs to go in this part, because it's closest to my house and my kids. It's not quite exactly fair, but if we could get the community to take part in the process, they might enjoy that, and we can get that input, yeah.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I just was going to share too, I think at the community and rec table, we've had a conversation too about the parks that need equipment and picking out, you know, to, that we are ready, that this park needs this equipment, so that if someone in the community wished to step up to the plate to say, I'll help fund this one, or that, or this park, or a different park, we would know what those parks needed for equipment versus just picking a piece, purchasing a piece of equipment and then deciding where it should go. So kind of to have more of a plan for each park's needs, and then how do we fulfill those needs? So I, I'm interested and intrigued by what you said, and I think we could bring that back to the community and rec table too, to see how we're going to figure out where it should go, so.
Just no discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Swantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration entering to an agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Question over there.
Just a, just a question, and you can call me out of order, but I'm getting a little bit confused about reallocations and movements of funds. We've had a conversation about this a few times, and every time it happens, we don't seem to get the same numbers back of where we move things, and it's, it's getting me a bit frustrated because I don't know where the target is. And it, it seems to stem here, because whenever we reallocate and move things around, then we don't memorialize it, and it's maybe my fault I don't keep it in the forefront of my mind, but I'd like to know how much money we have available to put into the parks, and if we had zero, if that's what we agreed on for 2017. if we had zero, if that's what we agreed on for 2017, and the only reason this is possible is from moving money out of the, not doing Swanson Field concession stand, I remember some of that conversation, but I'm, I'm a little cloudy on the Miller Park piece, exactly where those funds went and allocations, and which ones went into the Stormwater pieces, and so on. And so if we, if we can get some hard numbers for that and clarification of that, I would appreciate that at our next meeting.
You share some of my exact frustrations. It seems like we have conversations, the council gives direction, and then when we get something back, we're going in a different direction than what the council agreed to. And I know that that's something that Mr. Holland is working on, to bring that back, and what we say we want done actually gets done. And so I share that frustration.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson.
I think we, thank you, Mayor Calvin. I think we talked about this too. I don't know why we couldn't just get a CIP spreadsheet that shows what we've done and what we haven't done, and what's carried over from other years and those types of things. So I feel like there should be, that should be an easy, just push of the button to see where we're at. So when we needed to spend 15,000 or 18,000 at the fire department, we would know where we needed to do that from. So I think that is something that we talked about. I think we got a version of it at one time, but it would feel like it should be part of, even for the community, to know what resources are available yet in the capital improvement process.
Next is consideration of entering into an agreement with Dunick Inc. for construction of tennis courts at Miller Park. Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, before you is a council action report regarding Miller Park and the tennis court project that was a part of the 2000 CIP. Again, you'll get more information, I guess, at a future meeting as to the reallocation of the Swanson Field projects, but the resolution that we are working upon, there was $220,000 in the 2000 CIP for Miller Park. The resolution to reallocate money from the Swanson Field project to this project was $150,000. We've received a $10,000 grant from the USTA and have a $20,000 grant pending from the USTA. We opened bids recently, and Dunick Incorporated was the low bidder for the Miller Park tennis court portion of this project in the amount of $298,219.61, and its staff's recommendation to enter an agreement with Dunick Incorporated in that amount.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve an agreement with Dunick Incorporated for the construction of tennis courts at Miller Park. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen, followed by Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. According to the numbers here, there's $380,000 sitting there for this project, and they're gonna spend $298,000. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So where's the $90,000 going, or 82,000?
That's the, Mayor Calvin, members of the council, councilmember Christensen, we've entered into agreement with SRF Consulting to lead us through this project. The amount for that was $31,972. We've got near $300,000 for the Dunick portion. We are going to spend $10,485 from the Miller Park project to install the playground equipment on that location, leaving us with a total as of today, $340,677 for this project, which with 380 available would leave us with near $40,000 for contingencies that might take place.
Okay. The, the other amounts that you just mentioned, SRF and I forget a couple of other ones, have we approved them already too?
SRF was approved earlier, yes.
Okay. These numbers are just shooting by me. Just, okay.
Most, I'm sorry, Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the complaints that I received on the 16th Street Road Project was that they believed there was only one bid for the road project, as I recall. How many bids were looked at for the tennis courts? How many, how many parties participated in the bid process?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, I believe the bid tab might have been in the packet, but councilmember Alvarado, there were four bids, two came in under engineers' estimates, and two were slightly over engineers' estimates, with Dunick being the low bid.
Okay, thank you.
Page number 192 is the bid, is the bid tab.
I see that now, thank you. I think it's important that the public knows that more than one, a party participated in the, in the project, and that's one of the complaints I got on the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a consideration of the Dahlberg Flattable Edition preliminary plat, preliminary slash final plat. Mr. Peterson.
Yes, give me a second to pull this up here. Mayor Calvin, members of the council, the plat in front of you tonight for consideration is a simple redescration of property. It takes three properties that are on East Highway 12 and replats them formally into two lots. It actually includes some property that had been sold to Mr. Flattable from Mr. Dahlberg a number of years ago, but for some reason, the transfer was never made, and this will consolidate those properties into the two tracks the way they exist under the current ownership. It's the recommendation of staff that the council approve this plat without conditions.
I'll move staff's recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the preliminary and final plat for Dahlberg Flattable Edition. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification, it says both parcels will have access to Highway 12. So I know where nine is, 11, does that have an access right now?
Both properties have access to Highway 12 right now.
Right now?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
Just no discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of Midwest Storage Edition Final Plat. Mr. Peterson.
Midwest Storage Edition is a planned unit development, commercial plat of the property that used to have Midwest Motors and the storage buildings on East Highway 12. The new buyer wishes to subdivide the property so we can sell off certain portions of it for additional and future development. There is an outlot platted in the plat that is for common access. There will be declarations and covenants filed with the plat that define that that outlot is permanent access to all three parcels, and the reason that's required is that it's a controlled access highway, and MINDOT will grant no further access to 12 on that stretch. That being said, it's a recommendation of staff that the council approve the final plat of Midwest Storage Edition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to consider the Midwest Storage Edition Final Plat. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, I believe there's a bike trail possibility along, over in that area there? Is this still retained right of way to be able to do that?
Yeah, it has no impact on the state highway right of way.
Okay.
It's, the bike trail would be in the state highway right of way, and this is the outside, this is privately owned property.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Outlet A there for access to all three properties there, is that, it's not an easement, it's just, it's just an outlot that's owned by-
It is platted as an outlot. It will be owned by the association, and there'll be an association of three, formed by the three lot owners, and the way the covenants and the declarations will be written, it grants permanent access to all three parcels, and that's done so that they can actually sell and transfer ownership. Lenders are reluctant to give you financing on property you know and have access to.
Right.
And this commemorates the access to those three lots, and it will be, it will specify on each deed for each of the three parcels that access is from Outlet A, and they will all be reflected as owners that will be owned by the association in perpetuity and will grant access to those-
But that, that's done through a covenant? The covenants state that?
Yes, there is a recorded declaration that gets recorded with the plat, yes. So that will show up in any title work.
Could that ever change? I mean, could they say, "Well, we're not gonna have Outlet A," or, I mean-
If one person owned it all, owned all three parcels and decided that they didn't want it any longer, I imagine they could petition for it, but as long as you've got multiple parcels that desire access to Highway 12, it's, it's gonna be a requirement, yes.
Yeah, it only makes sense to do that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, consideration of Midwest Storage Edition Final Plat. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. City administrator comments.
None tonight's. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the mayor's comments, the city administrator and I met with people from Candyway County about the Eagle Lake Sewer Project, and I would just ask that we get that back on the table rather quickly. There are some key things that need to be done with the Eagle Lake Sewer. As everybody here knows, that that agreement has expired, initial agreement, and we currently have a signed letter continuing it year to year, but it would certainly be favorable not only for the Eagle Lake folks, so they know what their future is, but also for the council to know what the Eagle Lake Sewer system will, will be looking like. I've been contacted numerous times recently by the county administrator in wanting us to make some decisions on this, so hopefully we can get that on a work session rather quickly so that the council can deal with that. What I would like to see is have us have some type of an agreement in place before the end of the year, and then through the year 2018, we'll hammer out all the details, and then that agreement will take place in effect on January 1st of 2019. So it gives us a year to get everything all put together, because there probably are a number of things that will have to be done before we can get that agreement put in place, so. And that's what I had for mayor's comment. The other thing, I guess one other thing, is that the holidays parade, just a shout out to Wilmer Fest for the great job they did on the Wilmer Fest, I'm sorry, on the holidays parade, that attendance down there was fabulous, the floats they had, I think they had more floats than they've ever had before, and of course, the businesses opened up downtown. You know, I walked through the downtown and into a lot of the local businesses down there, and so that was very nice to see. I did talk to Chris Davis over at The Goodness. He said his numbers were down, but that, that simply may have been simply because there were so many other things opened up. So he thought it was a very good event, but their numbers were down just a little bit from what they'd been previously, so. It's been a great evening of good entertainment here in Wilmer, so. Councilmember comments, starting with councilmember Christensen.
On the Eagle Lake Sewer that you just mentioned, can we get some preliminary notes on that? So we know what to expect to talk about? I mean, you said there's something that we need to know. Could you shoot that to us?
Right, well, I mean, we all were at the meeting that was held downstairs here a couple of months ago, and so the next thing would be is to get us back together at a work session and talk about some of that as well, so.
But you said something has come up that we should know about.
Well, they're concerned that we don't let it just sit there. That's what's come up, is that they don't want us just to not deal with it.
Okay, so there's no new information?
Not any new-
Okay, I, I-
Substantial information.
I read it wrong there. I thought there was new information or something. Okay. Go home and have supper.
Exactly. Councilmember Schwantes.
I simply want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Hope it's full of family, fun, and food.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I miss having our city council meetings in downtown Wilmer, but in addition to that, I wanna talk-
Why did I know you were gonna say that?
In addition to that, I want to share something that I've been asked to be a part of. It's called In Common Sharing Stories. It's the American Composers Forum, and I'm just gonna read a couple paragraphs here. In Common, the new community collaboration program from the American Composers Forum gives communities the opportunity to explore and celebrate their unique diversity through the sharing of stories and the creation of new music. Coordinated by the ACF, this is a 12 to 18-month community arts project. We'll bring together diverse people, including civic leaders, a faith congregation, musicians, artists, and composers, and a composer in residence who is chosen during the planning process. The composer's residency in the community will center on organizing events where people can come together to discover what they have in common. During the In Common Composer Residencies, community participants from all walks of life will gather to discover shared experience and purpose, and to imagine better lives in the community they all call home. This collaboration will forge new relationships and create new music based on real stories and experiences, and performed by community members at free public events. With the support from Otto Bremer Trust and In Common Residency, will take place in one Bremer Bank community each year, starting with Wilmer, Minnesota. So that's an honor for our community to have them do that, and I'm looking forward to being a part of that and seeing what happens.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
Pass.
Councilmember Osmus.
Just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and drive safe.
Councilmember Plowman.
Wow. Usually I just like pass the buck to try to get out. No, I just, I wanted to extend, first of all, I think we did a, this was the conclusion of a long duration of, of, of hard work and contemplation and working with our constituents, dialoguing, if that's even a word, but I'm gonna make it one, dialoguing with our constituents, and this was like a monumental task when it first came to the table, and, and for me, I'm three years in, and I can say easily this is the biggest deal to come to the table in, in three years, and I'm, so I'm, I'm pretty excited about it. And I especially want to thank our ad hoc committee for getting in there and putting in the hours and helping to alleviate any fears that we have, and help, help us as a council do our due diligence, along with our legal staff, of course. I know they poured hours and hours and hours over it, but, but you guys are close to us, and we were willing and able to, to get some confidence built in that, so appreciation from me, and I, I think the mayor and I have talked about it before, but it's commonly brought up, but I guess kinda the best. Work done by elected officials isn't always the funnest votes, and it's not always the easiest votes, it's the ones that are sometimes a bit contentious and that you don't want to have to make, but you're willing to put in the time and the effort and do your work. Those are the votes that have the longest lasting reward, so I think we did our jobs well.
Thank you. And just to prove I can say it, I'm in agreement with what you said. Okay. We had talked about having a special council meeting.
You forgot.
I'm sorry, councilmember Nelson.
That's all right. I, I, as the hospital liaison, I have to say, there've been a lot of hours put into this, not only by our ad hoc group and the city council, but by a lot of people in this community, and I think our unanimous vote tonight spoke very well for the future of the transaction. I think we all came from different places, and we put a lot of time and energy into it, so I am pleased with the unanimous vote. I think we are doing the right thing for the future of healthcare in our community, so. I was gonna ask about the special meeting for budget next week, but I will pass it to the mayor and say, "I thought we talked about that." I'm concerned we haven't reviewed the budget, and I think we have an opportunity to maybe meet, so I'm, I would request that we have a meeting next week.
Yeah, we had talked that we were gonna have a meeting on the 27th, and so is council in agreement, 7 o'clock on the 27th for a work session?
Is it, is it also possible or appropriate that the Eagle Lake could be discussed then, or do we have time to do it?
We certainly can. We certainly can.
I had five.
Yep, five?
We're gonna make it seven?
Oh, I don't know. What, what's everybody?
Five.
Doesn't matter to me.
Let's do five.
Huh?
Five.
Five? I don't, doesn't matter.
5:15.
Yep.
So if it's at 5 o'clock, then we have to have food again?
Yes.
No food.
Yes.
Anything else for the good of the order? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
For adjourned.